Our fourth and retreat minutes. We added some travel, conferences and overnight trips. Yesterday, the SSSO project was ratified. And tonight it is here for approval, so that was added. And we also added a new English teacher, Nicole Rust. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the agenda. Pleasure by Dale, thank you by Christian, any questions? All favor, I, I, me opposed, between the stage, motion here. Okay, so we'll move on to letter number three, recognitions and presentations, then we have steam camp presentation.
Hey, everybody, I'm Shaffer. I was the coordinator again this summer for the summer steam camps. Can you get it back to?
Yeah, sorry, that's really quick, gonna.
Okay, so um. Today, we're going to talk about our summer steam camp program. So you're gonna change the slide there, Marcy. This is our second year coordinating the summer steam camps. And work begins on summer steam camp way before anybody is appointed to the position to to coordinate the camp. Uh, we begin in late March and early April, when the principals and other admins start to plan for summer school. Um, it's a joint effort because some of our camps actually back up to the summer program. So that students can stay here for the full day if they need that that service. So how do we start planning? First of all, we canvas our staff to see who wants to help. Because uh, we have several individuals that really enjoy summer steam camp. They plan the camps, they create their curriculum, um, they plan the trips. So this year, we have three teachers who stepped up to design camps to Shaffer. Um, Amy Shaw and Jen Hawkins all stepped up to design, to design and run camps. We had another 10 volunteer be helpers for run the preset camp called Camp Invention, which is a national camp program that runs in many school districts. Many school districts charge $250 to $300 for our students to participate in Camp Invention. And we're really blessed that we are able to provide that for our students at no charge. Um, so we have a lot of work to do to get the schedule put together. Um, what days are, or what weeks are our, our employees available to run camps? Um, and then how does that fit in with the admin summer program? So we do a lot of that, if you can go ahead and change that, Mars. So this year, we were thinking, wouldn't it be nice if we could really work together between sports camps, summer swim, um, summer splash, our academic program, and summer steam camps? So we did work together. Um, we actually made electronic signup forms for most of our summer activities. We also created a one-page flyer with QR codes on it so that they could be sent home to families. Um, they could be distributed, they were hung up in our foyers so that families could access the information while it was available. Registration, we're doing early June. We had really great responses. Um, and we even had students signing up for camp well into the summer. Can you change the slide? So this is what our one-page flyer looked like. We actually had information on summer splash, which was our um, high school prospect and Seneca Academic Program. We had our steam camp. We had our athletic summer camp. And we had swim lessons. And those QR codes went to the individual coordinators so that they were able to manage their own registrations. And the summer splash academic program was by invitation only. And that was handled by the um, the summer building coordinators for summer school. So we started camp on July 8th. Everybody, we got back after school, headed to kind of refresh and enjoy some time with their families. Um, we had about 100 students sign up for the 16 camps that were offered. We did end up canceling one camp, we took out enrollment. Um, we only had one student that was enrolled, so we figured it was probably a good idea. We offered that student another camp, but they wanted to come. Um, we did have four camps that ran all six weeks. So we had a prospect mini camp, Camp Invention, that ran from 12:30 to 2:30 here in this building. We had a Seneca mini camp invention that ran from 12:30 to 2:30 at Seneca. We had a half-day garden club that ran on Fridays. And we had a full-day Friday camp that was tabletop games. So our students came and played Dungeons and Dragons and Magic and other tabletop games that they enjoyed playing. So that was really a nice break for some of the kids. And sometimes, for some of those kids, that was the only camp that they came to. And that was a nice time for them to connect again over the summer. We did have many students register for multiple camps. Um, so we did have camps like our camp where it ran two separate times. And there were different curriculums for our camp. And some of the students came to both our camps. We had cooking camp that ran at two separate places. Some camps came to both cooking camps. We had three weeks of environmental camps. We had a wildlife camp. We had a Susan aquarium camp. And we had an aquatics camp. And many students came to all three of those camps. Now, a side note, those camps were kind of in preparation for a new idea that we've had at the high school to create like an environmental science, wildlife pathway for students to gain experience to be able to be employed either by the T E C, the nation, go on to study. Um, so we had one little boy, uh, tell you a funny story. And he didn't remember, thank you, wanted to come. And I called dad, like I do with a lot of the campers, and said, hey, you know, just, is your child still planning to come? He goes, ah, I really don't know if he wants to come or not. I said, oh, so and so and so is coming to camp. I think they're in the same grade, all of those, those are his buddies. So he comes to camp the first week and he wasn't signed up for the next two weeks of environmental camp. And he looked at Mr. Shaffer and he said, I love this, you changed my life. Can I come to the next two camps? I really enjoy this, this type of stuff. So he did come to the next couple of camps, really enjoyed it. Um, so that was really heartwarming to hear that something that we were provided, even if it touches one child's life, was it worth it, probably? Um, we also had campers that use uh, school transportation, so that was really nice. And let me tell you, if, I know you guys have an honor to listen, that woman is a saint. She is so flexible and so accommodating for our children and our families. I can't thank her enough for everything that she did for summer steam camp. Um.
Oh, I gotta share the other things, but I'll see it.
So one of the things that I do each week is part of the coordinator jobs. I collect pictures from the camp. And we do a Facebook post and we put on what we are doing. We also put pictures up on our steam camp website so that parents can take a peek into what the students are doing each week. Um, if you can't bring it up, it's okay, Mars.
I can't see it now, although it's open. Oh, I know why, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, see, it's very behind my bearers.
So um, oh, kayaking experience is also part of sort of under the enveloped steam camp. But so we've got some pictures here from the students um, doing kayaking camp. And expand the accordion. You'll see that the students went to Lexington State Park. They did do programming there, which was really nice. The park does some really nice programming. Um, some pictures from art camp. They did tie-dye shirts, oops.
Taking a hot.
We went fishing in the Elway River. So we had a little oops the one week and um, they came to drag past the bus drivers. We couldn't go on a field trip to the aquarium, we were supposed to dissect a shark. So we had a re-group that week and we looked at the, the agenda. We had one week where we just didn't have things to do. So uh, Dr. Patrillo actually reached out to the Seneca Fish and Wildlife and talked with them. And we did get a couple of fishing licenses for the adults. And we were able to take the kids right there off of our campus in that o'block. Those kids had so much fun. They discovered so many different pieces of wildlife in our river. What's in the river? They fish, they crab, they did all kinds of things, so they had a ball with that. Here's our cooking camp, we did that in a special um, room that has the kitchen in it. Um, even Larry, the service staff, came along. You can go back to the presentation if you may. Um, we did 3D printing. We did um, drones, we did robotics. The students did so many wonderful things this summer. Um, visits to uh, the Erie Zoo, the Buffalo Zoo. We went to the aquarium two different times. We went to Lexington State Park two different times and did programming there. We went to Elway State Park two different times. Does anybody know who Brett Cory Peterson is? He's the gentleman that created the uh, field guides that scientists use. Um, there's an institute in Jamestown, they do a wonderful program for the kids. And each one of our kids in their camp got a mini first uh, field guide. Um, they went to the Audubon Society. Uh, during the wildlife camps, each student kept a field journal. So um, as Karen will tell you, we were able to poster a lot of our field trips through C A D O C by including an art component, which was our field guide where they had to draw pictures of the things that they were learning about. So it was really a nice experience, it did make some writing experience. Um, so there was a lot of great things. Um, Penn Dixie did a nice program for us. Uh, so you can see all the different places that we went. We also had some super lunches provided by our cafeteria staff. And they were super accommodating when we were going to go on a field trip. They made the kids a really nice bagged lunch that they were able to take and have lunch on the road. And that was new this year. Uh, we were not able to do that in years past. We are not being able to provide lunches when we went on field trips. So thanks to John Haley and Sandy Brundage and our grant, that worked out really, really nice. So you can see some pictures here. There's a Facebook post of some of the things Levi put on. We have all kinds of pictures of the kids doing so many activities. This was a Camp Invention student making a, a, a monster robot thing in Camp Invention. Camp Invention is nationally acclaimed uh, through the National Inventors Hall of Fame. And that program is, comes with, to us with all the supplies, all the um, curriculum. So it's a nice program. Um, our staff for the summer steam camp really wants to say thank you for your support. And I do have one small addendum to um, the summer steam camp. Um, I had heard that you didn't know a lot about our STEC program. So Dr. Patrillo, when she asked me to do this, asked me to just talk to just a little bit about STEC and what that is, so if you want to go to the next slide. So I am the liaison between our school and Fredonia University for STEC, which is the Science Technology Entry Program. And if you have this, you can always click on that and see what, what the grant is all about. Um, if you want to go ahead and change it. Amy Shaw is the advisor and we both work through, um, the liaison at Fredonia to bring this to our children. We do things like field trips. We went to the Museum of Science, we went to the Rochester Museum this past year. We went to Girls in Manufacturing Day through STEC and Portville Manufacturing Fair. We took a special trip to Reading P A. There is a program called GLOW. And GLOW is about climate change and tracking weather conditions and different um, different environmental factors. And we were invited by Dr. Yvonne through the SUNY Fredonia University um, to take some students. And we took two teams, took a total of seven students from seventh grade to 12th grade. And went to Reading P A to this place called uh, Burke's Nature. And our students were able to present actual scientists, NASA scientists. They were also able to learn a lot about, about weather and animals while we're there. Career presentations that we get. We're planning on doing that again this year. And we're looking at how we can study our river and take some river research to this next symposium. I was able to go this summer. Uh, they actually have the National GLOW Foundation Week at Fredonia. So I was invited to go to that and meet some people from all over the country. So it was really an excellent, uh, excellent experience for me and for our kiddos. Uh, we do do monthly meetings, we meet once a week, once a month? I'm sorry, once a week on Thursdays. Um, Amy runs many of the meetings. We also have Fredonia that runs some of our meetings and brings in people that talk for students about careers in science and technology, which is great. Um, so that's a lot of, a lot of fun for our kids. We also get to meet students from other schools like Wanda and Randa. Um, and Olean, if you go ahead and change that. Um, so here's some of our pictures. These were our seven students that we took to Reading. Um, that was a wonderful experience for them. It was all paid through the grant, it didn't cost the district anything at all. We also do a little STEC experience night, and that's on the board reelection night and budget vote night. We try to do a little STEC experience night. Change that. What else will we benefit from this grant? This year, we got about $10,000 in equipment and supplies. Things like a trout in the classroom setup. So we're gonna now start raising trout down the Seamen that will be used into the Elgame River. We bought physics equipment. We bought a centrifuge for our living environment people. We also bought supplies for our seventh grade science teachers in addition to all the supplies that we buy for the STEC night, the sea night, and our STEC program um, supplies. Uh, they pay my stipend, they pay the advisor stipend. The chaperone pays, so when I need chaperones for an activity, STEC pays for those chaperones. And they also pay for tutors. So our students that are STEC members can be tutored by our faculty and the STEC grant will pay that, that fee. Um, and then, of course, we get opportunities to visit and work with students and, and faculty from other schools, which broadens our opportunities for cases. So it's a lot of fun, it's a great program. This will be my fourth year involved in it. Um, and I can't say enough about the benefits that brings to our school district. So do you have any questions for me? It is a great program, $10,000 in, in materials and supplies, that is awesome. The trout in the classroom setup alone was probably $3,000, $4,000 just for the basic setup. And trout in the classroom, I didn't realize, is in a lot of southern tier uh, school districts. We also saw it and um, actually can't remember where I was. I was out with my boy someplace and we actually saw a trout in the classroom setup at, like, a nature preserve. So it's a pretty big deal. Um, they give curriculum and everything for um, for the program. So we're hoping that that will build our environmental wildlife. So my great thanks, what did you?
Thank you for that, and next up, we have our net presentation.
Well, now we stand on the way ball. We do want to say it's not totally net, it's an initiative that we're working on. So we want to share that with you. I just have to be a member of that. Um, my name's Lucy Happel. Um, I am a TESOL teacher for the district. Um, TESOL is teaching English, teaching other languages. And Ms. Cook and I are actually both certified TESOL teachers. So we met, funny that you were talking about kayaking, we met getting kayak certified um, last summer. So we were kayaking together and of course, when you're kayaking, you're talking. So we talked a lot. And we realized that we really have a lot in common, especially our knowledge of indigenous development, like the acquisition. And kind of how to vibe forward words. Um, I'm bilingual, English and Spanish. And of course, I'm also bilingual. So uh, we have a lot of experience working with students who have bilingual languages in their home, in their community. Um, and so that's kind of how we were able to connect. Um, and then throughout this past year, we had a lot of conversations, we became good friends. And um, talked about how we can, as a district, support heritage language about that. And basically, the um, the bilingualism that exists in our community. How can we support it as a school so that they can continue to foster?
Can I share when we, when this was added on and I was coming to help rookie work with her? And I noticed she was in here and then she shared with me, we had a pre-K native student coming in. And she was just really scared. And so she was working with her, I came along and we helped her through, get settled in. And it was just really cool and found that we started thinking about these students that come from different languages. And she was speaking, just enjoying the classroom by the end of the year, so that was really nice. And then I realized what interest we have that's happening and that's coming about.
So I just want to talk a little bit about bilingualism and why it's such an important thing to focus on. So I don't know if you know this, but um, language learning begins in the womb. So when you're a baby in the womb, you're hearing the sounds of your environment, the sound of your mother's voice, the sound of the people around you. Um, and babies mimic the language that they're hearing. So they will babble differently depending on what environment you're in. Um, so bilingualism is really a gift because there's this possibility of code switching between English and another language. And sometimes even a code switch between two cultures when you're coming to school. Um, and that code switching actually makes the brain strong. So um, bilinguals actually have less likely, or less likely to develop false language. If it's in your genetics, it can offset and actually delay the development of language. So it's very good for your brain, very similar actually to learning English.
It's, you've got no word, bilingualism, but it is really something that's really been happening. So really feeling that it's a, it's a word that's coming back and putting things together. And we're seeing it as we talk about the things. And I hear her talk, she works with Spanish students and the families. And I'm talking about a couple of students that were finding out, the kids that come. And we'll get on, we'll get on from that in the north of the court. Go ahead, let's go, I get excited about it, so.
We could talk about this all day, so have us back any time, we'll talk about bilingualism. Um, but also, it's been found that bilingual students outperform unlabelled peers. So this is talking about fully bilingual students. Not every child is going to be balanced by bilingual people. She got, so I'm gonna backside always to a goal. It's still good for the brain and it's still good for the soul, for that child to develop their heritage language. So that's pretty much um, kind of where this started. And this presentation has two aspects that we're trying to develop. So one of them is about the faith keeper school and students were transitioning. And we were already talking about this when we found out there will be a fourth grade student coming um, from faith keepers.
And we, yeah, we got a email telling me that a fourth grade student will be coming from faith keeper school. So we put our heads together and we said, we want to really support this student when this student comes. So we planned some PD for ourselves to work together. And the fourth grade teacher was going to be with us, she wasn't even coming at that time. But we did do a visit to Faith Keeper School. We got to meet the student, we got to see the environment, very peaceful environment. So we know already when she's coming in, it's a whole totally different environment. So we did present to IPC. And it was really interesting that, uh, you know, Sue brought up the fact of this similar transition when somebody's coming like from boarding school. And it is, because we realized, we sat there as they did their Montessori, where I'm also Montessori certified, so I, I, I had a case check. And it was quiet as the students went out and they, they were, we looked at each other and we think of the house of any one of the three schools, there's any one of the, any one of, you know, they're loud and, and how can we make sure she feels safe? So we got to meet her and it was really exciting to let her know, we'll see you when you, when, when you come to the school. So we're gonna make sure that we're here for her.
And her dad is also a social worker, please, there, um, probably perfect already who it might be. And he's very supportive, I had a long conversation with him today and uh, it was really positive. He's really into kind of making that all work, so.
It's been back, it's been a few years back. So this is like my ninth year here, eighth, ninth year here. And one of my students that was, when I was uh, interning up at the Faith Keeper School is in like ninth or 10th grade now. And when he transitioned here, he came with a lot of language, a lot of Seneca language. And he's, and he's shared within a month's time. He said, I don't want to speak no more Seneca, nobody in the class is speaking Seneca, I don't want to speak no more Seneca. And so it was really sad and it stuck with me as it went on because they do come with a handful of Seneca. And as I met her, and she's talking about working with the Spanish families in the community and how she's telling the Spanish parents, you know, because the parents will speak to the students in, in Spanish, but they don't really worry about if they speak that, which is, which is, you're giving enough input and you're not really worried about the output. And that's the same thing that happens with the Seneca language. You know, kids, students will go to the language and they'll hear some familiar words, but they don't really repeat it. And we noticed the students that, the young students that are in the row and they go to the language and they hear that they have a different culturally immersed ear for the Seneca language than a student that is not in there. And so now we're starting to realize these different students of many languages that are having these issues. But when I heard her say, and I told those parents, don't worry about the English, that's my job. And as a TESOL teacher, that was, you know, our student taught at School Three and at uh, Grover Cleveland. And it was really cool to see the students from Somalia and Puerto Rican and everyone that were there. And I was teaching about our TESOL culture, it was really cool. But to watch them function amongst themselves in a school district, middle buffalo was like seeing our kids come, when we come from the territory. Because it is still that time, well, there's a whole bunch of people that aren't the same color, but how do we do that? And it was just really exciting to hear her advocate, they must speak their heritage language. A non-indigenous person coming, maybe, maybe they, we gotta make sure that when this next student comes up, unfortunately, they go to um, three to six, six to nine, and, and uh, the teacher is certified by 12th.
Four years of age.
So they will be staying longer up there and coming down. And even though I'm a part of NET, which is integrated culture, um, you know, pre-K through 12, I asked Dr. Miller, when I moved to NET, can I really make sure that I take care of the Seneca language teachers and make sure I'm supported from there? And of course, he said, yeah, because we want them to be successful academically and teacher identity. Because we do see at the high school level indigenous students that have many, come from many backgrounds, have an identity issue that they're trying to find who they are. And many of them find it in the support of their parents in the community, but many of them are even scared to talk about it. So through this and thinking about all those things, we hope to be there for that one student, the many students say, huh. Native or non-Spanish or Seneca, whatever language, it just really hit home when I, when I talked to her, how we need to help every child. And we do that at September 30th, every child matters, but it's like every child matters every day. And how do we make sure we do that? So when this happened, and she mentioned this to me in March, I think you got the next, the next, the next slide.
Okay, so this is the program that we developed during our, our professional development together. And we kind of, like she said, we put our heads together. So we decided on these four kind of aspects of support for students coming from Faith Keeper School. So student support, that would be support from me during the ELA block specifically. Also, um, the, a lot of these things already exist. So it's not like we're building things from scratch. These tutoring programs, counseling already exist. But we're gonna just make sure that, that we're monitoring that child and, or any child that we are, you know, making, advocating for them to be, to be advocated for. Um, and then also, um, Ms. Cook and the NET team and the Seneca language teachers will work on giving that child an opportunity to use and speak some Seneca language on a regular basis. Um, and then also training and support for the teacher so that that teacher can understand the background that the child comes from. And also um, integrating some of that curriculum and some of the language right into the general classroom. Um, and support for the parent. So in this case, the parent is already in the district, which is super helpful. But um, in other cases, the parent might really want to have somebody to touch base with more often. Might feel some nerves or some uh, you know, just some discomfort about the whole thing, the transition, so just to be there for them as well. Next slide.
Uh, in March, yeah, she, she emailed me, she says, I have this really nice conference and I'd be like, I should go. At that time, um, Rachel wasn't moving over to NET, we were just like still in, in, in our regular schedule. And uh, La Posenta, she said, was really a really good thing. And it is a bilingual uh, conference, indigenous and Spanish conference that she wanted us to go to. And when it came time, it, we were thinking about it, thinking about it, and it got to the, doing our summer thing. And I said, uh, Title VI sent out a, a invite of how to spend money. And I said, let's call Erin and Erin came in and we told him everything what we wanted to do. And he took it back to these people and he came back. And so um, Rachel and her will be hopefully traveling if they get approved to go there because bilingualism is coming, I think it's coming bad. Because we want a child, especially indigenous or Spanish, any child that has two cultures or three cultures, they need to find that balance. And if we can help them sooner, I think the academic success is definitely possible on move. So I mean, I, I think help would be very, it's great, I think, sorry.
And I also have to say, Erin is really good at what he does. And he really, uh, I was shocked at how, um, how fast he was able to support us and how enthusiastic he was. So I just wanted to give him that credit because honestly, these.
Yes, his number. Yes, his number, his number routine and everything, how he executes, you know, any kind of issue for a conference was really exciting.
So this is the second component of the presentation, this is the New York State Seal of Bilinguality. So um I don't know if you've heard about the Seal of Bilinguality, but it's a nationwide recognition program. So actually, all fifty states have adopted a seal and every state, of course, has their own requirements for what the seal entails. Um so our district has already adopted the civic seal of readiness. Um this is an additional seal that we can offer to students at graduation. Um I just want to tell you a little bit about why this would be a great initiative. And I would like to help to get this initiative off the ground because there is a lot of course with anything like this, there's a lot of paperwork, a lot of learning that that goes along with it. So um I'm not going to read all the bullets, but um basically it's acknowledging that bilingual bilingualism is important. And that that hard work that students go through is valuable. Um and also, I really liked, oh, future employers, of course, yeah, you have a seal, you can say, I'm bilingual. And my state says bilingual, you know, so that's that's great. But this is the part I really liked, it really encourages the study of languages. Americans are notorious for not having multiple languages, whereas in other countries of the world, almost everyone's bilingual. Because English is the lingua franca, which is like what everybody's trying to learn and speak together. So um yeah, let's change that as as much as we can in our community. Um but also the value of the language really honors the culture. Because the culture and the language are like this, you can't separate that.
And we've already had um several preschool district uh graduated, one student with bilingual, bilingual seal of. Seal, yeah, she happened to be my, she happens to be my great niece, which I'm really excited about. And my other great niece in Anadaga, uh Lafayette School District got the seal of bilinguality. And they worked very hard in their language and so we really see this and it's so nice in this, in this, in this United States. Because I know for the Mohawk students up on the other side, they have to take French and graduate and pass French. They don't have an optional Mohawk, they can have some of it at your school, but it's not what they'll get a Seminole English credit and their ELA credit and everything. It's really interesting how the differences work, but I really am excited that they're no. If you didn't know, learning two languages, your sentences are working and moving along so fast that is really beneficial to you. And so monolingual students, not that they're saying they're less than, but it would be more beneficial to help.
And this seal can be offered to students who have two languages at home, but it can also be offered to the monolingual child who wants to learn English. So these are your students who are taking Spanish or Seneca language, they didn't have that growing up, but they're working very hard towards that, so. And that's the end of that component of our presentation, if you have any questions.
Yeah, this was.
And also summer things that.
That we did, but I was thinking about the bilingual seal and the things that I had, so she's taking all the training that's going to be with the bilingual seal. This next upcoming year and then I'm also in a year of program for um um training to help with the act of fill for the Seneca language. And uh banking up those um assessments for those for the language teachers at the high school level. While Rachel is also um bringing in and mentoring our new language teacher, what's nice is she can still make sure that happens on a basis and transition transition her in and stuff. So that was working really good while we're here and everything, so we're excited to talk this, because TESO is. TESO teachers are something nobody really talks about and thinks about and it was really nice because I really seen how our students. And here, having been part of that pre K through twelve, when we walked down this foot, down this hall, you know, there's teach. Students of every color that will say, yeah, I see her, I'm still, you'll see me in this, and they'll, and they'll, I remember her. Because we came in and just shared some things about a language, any language, and that everybody can speak any language, so we're excited about it. And hope that this um at least to help the students that are definitely coming in now. And I don't think the uh faith keeper school might be just keeping them up there into the third, fourth or fifth grade. So we want to still continue to work with them to make sure that, because they don't know when the parent might say, hey. And and most of the time, they're nervous about them not getting enough English. And I really feel that our district does well with that and with TESO teachers, with like, yeah, they'll they'll get English, but let them keep their language as much as they can.
I think that's, I I can't remember why we put these pictures in.
We put them in for the for the parent, for the, but that's okay, because honestly, the work that Ms. Cook did this summer. Um I was lucky enough to take a few of her professional developments and it is such a. How do I put it into words? Just such a beautiful day and um such a healing experience.
These baskets are on display in New York State for individuals.
And some of our kids want first place in this, yes, yeah.
That's fine, then we are serving um cornbread online uh in October. So it'll be cornbread with just the um like tamale and so our cooks, they're going really good, we're going to have this new signage and we'll have this.
Family and friends and staff for attending our food and eating parties tonight. Very so excited for the school year and can't wait to see everybody next week, Tuesday. Staff, we will see you tomorrow morning, have a great night.
I can tell you that the the session that you did with that food service crew, they absolutely loved it.
They were good workers, they were they were troopers and they tried out some new equipment in there and made some modifications. So I told them I would be there in October to make sure that it is a ring of cornbread sliced up for the kids and they liked it. And then we did a one hour service for the service helpers so that they would understand what the chef's been cooking and so they got to taste it.
Yeah, what a great thing.
Yeah.
Oh, that was awesome. What what was the picture they're, what were they baking in the one picture again?
Can you go back?
In the kitchen.
Uh they're making cornbread.
Oh, they're making.
They made cornbread, they 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 they, I made one and they made one.
Yeah.
So they did the flour and they learned the process, they pounded, we had we had on uh we had on loan from Rochester um on steak. Uh but not the end, we started like, I'm a good friend to them, so let us, they let us bring a corn pounder, so there there's pictures in there and they were pounding. And so they actually made cornbread and that was, we were talking about consistency and everything, they were really cool. And then then we did fried bread, they won't serve fried bread online because the fried bread not being, you know, with the with the fat and everything, but we didn't, I didn't, they made it back. I feel like.
Just bring down the COVID class or.
I said, when we did that, you know, we were trying to think about how we can have our tacos, because each school got tacos, Indian tacos in their cafeteria.
Yes.
So maybe maybe we might have a competition or something or maybe somebody would have, but John has been really awesome, all the things that he's doing and working and stuff.
Can can he be in front of it yet?
He he's he's just monitors, he's saying. The guy can turn the break, you know, we got, there's a difference, I worked with a gym teacher uh at Lafayette School District. We did fried bread for the kids between our language class and and the gym class, but there was an interesting thing that we didn't get out. Was when a man plays with the brings the flour in and and it's like, you can't rush it, you cannot, better bring the flour in gradually. But you know, maybe being impatient or something, he brought the flour in really fast, you know, but so we got that and his friend, his and he says, my bread is just really tough. And I said, that's because, you know, you you rushed it, you can't rush it, like anything, once you're cornbread, you can't rush it.
Slow food is good for the soul, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are on to number four communications, do we have any public communications? Okay, Title Six Communications.
Yeah, I don't have anything today, I just have a few here in some detail of this presentation, of course, I think it's no secret that it's how the district has been. A lot of programs since I've been at school. Um and this is just another one of those things that I think keeps us ahead of the curve, especially this department and many of the. And R H E's, especially, you know, the communities are really chomping at the bit to try to find out how to create a program. So to be able, they again, they dropped me on board uh for some funding, uh we saved quite a bit of money on studying less people to NIA this year. Uh so we're gonna send uh Rachel and Lindsay this year to Mexico, although you go on to that or to see a conference and be able to bring back. More, um you know, obviously they've been putting all the work in, I think the big difference is the passion and Lindsay and. How much work, I mean, I met with them twice on this and we went over two hours to both. The first act was, hey, can you give us real quick about this little thing? I came with all my numbers and everything and then that went for two and a half hours, way past working time and so I was, you guys get, you know. The second meeting did the same thing, you know, just shows how much passion, how much work and dedication and hesitation. Said, I said, can you guys present this, I can't see, I can't do it justice, like I. Absolutely no problem. Presentation was done in a day or two, you know, he presented the board, I think they loved it, it was absolutely, you know, they never said. No or anything like that, so I just would get support, I love the program, I think this is going to be another thing that we just started. A little, people are a little more jealous of us than us about that, it's just kind of, they're creating that safety and making me feel like I know my. Uh family, friends and people that have their kids transitioning over the years out of faith keeper school. Because they make that decision that their kids belong to faith keeper school and that's the decision they want to make. And to make them feel comfortable wanting to public school, transitioning out of faith, whether it's coming to our school or a surrounding school.
If I can just jump in, I didn't know that La Cosa means harvest, so when she translated it for me, it's just like that, we're truly harvesting, you know, our leaders. Um native and non, you know, to work together for a better world, you know, going back to those thirteen characters. So, oh, we're human beings, this thing was with human being and so when she translated, I said, how do you say it, what does it mean? And it's like harvest and it's like, and we did, we shelled corn here on here many and that many a days with um with rookies classes, the students loved it. They loved doing all those things and so we're working, continuing with that, with food and everything.
And I think that's with this team that we have, with us, we realize every service that we have, we give it services, we have so much to become, to make this together. Creating a lighter and creating support system, creating support staff that make sure these kids don't want to go away in the range of the culture when they come to our school. We don't want this last, we want them to thrive and help them even teach some of our other kids in classes or whenever they feel comfortable speaking them. So I'm a huge fan and as soon as they put me on the team this month ago, I was chopping it, making sure they, so. No, no constant district, obviously, there's just a fun, you think of.
Yeah.
It's a hard thing to guys, I.
And two hours is a quick meeting.
All right, so what are we up to, uh central office message?
Um the only I have is uh tonight with three vegetables, we had um potatoes like corn and potatoes and eggplant and. Breaking pepper. Yell squash, so I watched through our beer farm, to your families, our beer poops, to your families crying. And we gave much weight, uh hopefully this all gone today and we need to buy a market tomorrow, we can do that too, so we'll have another table tomorrow night. Um at the picnic table.
Oh. We have a warm vacation message. Christian.
Well, um no, uh honestly, tonight was amazing, I I got a good shout, I could give a shout out to the presenters, you could. Aaron, right, definitely could see the the pride and passion being out of both your presentation and the team presentation. Um just to know that our students and and our family members have, I have you guys and everyone, all our resources at their disposal. It just gives me such confidence and board member and also as a parent and everything that we're doing here at the district and. I just like, I can't be more proud of everybody and after the work everybody's doing and yeah, just excited for another great school year, so thank you very, very much.
Chrissy.
Thank you ladies, um the your presentation was even um better than the second. I I know, I I really enjoyed it when you did it at um indigenous prayer committee, but I think that I don't wanna, I think I just got more out of it the second. So maybe I should see you very much. If you go through, you provide.
So, yeah, got a little better.
Now, thank you to Mrs. Schacher for her presentation on on the steam and uh. Yeah, second one, Steph, Stephen Steph, that was um interesting and informative. Yeah, tonight, the picnic is just like really going well, there's lots of families here, there's lots of kids here, a lot of teachers are here. I know I came with my daughter yesterday because my granddaughter is um going to be serving pre K. So that was also a really nice event, which is helping to honestly. Everything to everybody that was involved in that.
Bill?
Yeah, it was a busy place tonight. Uh it really shows the way that. Uh I'm glad to be here, um thanks uh to the the presentations. Steph, your team, team for the summertime, I mean, that's that's grateful that kids have had those opportunities. And bilingual education is very important, it uh learning a an excellent language really does open up those extra pathways in the brain. And you know, much like our our music, it's such that have have such a nice program. So, um other than glad to be back, uh but I have the kids back next next week, so. Let's kick off the year in style.
Thank you. Uh and for me, it's just thanking everybody again, uh thank everyone for all the hard work over the summer. Uh thanks for all the hard work getting ready for the school year, it's appreciated and I'm excited for the school year to get started. Can't wait, can't wait to see the kids back in school and this place is busy and buzzing again, um that's all I got for the morning. All right, let's move on to the superintendent message.
Just a quick thank you, uh a lot goes into putting on a picnic like tonight and then we have another one tomorrow night. Uh we also had our entire staff back today. And recognized several uh individuals with the first uh award medallions that were given out at this point. So uh in our next board meeting, we'll talk about some of those individuals that earned those sorts of practices that were taken uh over the summer. But it's just a lot of last minute pieces here to make sure that everybody gets to school safely, they have a good day and gets home safely, especially almost for a few days. For some of our youngest students, so thank you to everyone for the work that they've been doing and go Warriors.
Um I apologize, I forgot to get you gals, but.
You're off hook tonight.
We're already running late, so we'll we'll just. Uh let's see where we consent agenda. So tonight's consent agenda, we have minutes from our special meeting, minutes from last week's board meeting, travel conference overnight trips, CSE estimations. CPSU recommendations and so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Sorry, Tracy, second, second about Dale, um I had a couple of questions on the conference and overnight. Um just making sure all these dates are accurate. Because I see in one of them, I have, we have crossed out dates that are ten twenty six to ten thirty. This is for the instructional coaches conference. Yeah, I mean, I'm just, because they're cross out from it back and I'm just clarifying, because on one of the other ones, there is a, there is a error.
We got New Orleans, the twenty six to thirty, yeah, right?
Yeah, those dates are accurate for the conference, according to this paperwork, right?
Just take it out of the paperwork, okay?
Well, on the National Council for the Social Studies Conference, on the front or on the top, it's listed from eleven twenty one to eleven twenty four. And then at the bottom, it's listed as checkout date eleven twenty five. So was it eleven twenty four or is it eleven twenty five?
So I go from the top, the twenty first to the twenty fourth, but they're checking out to twenty fifth, so it probably should be the twenty fifth.
Can we, can we double check? And just to make sure that everything is accurate.
Okay, can we approve it to the twenty fifth and if it is, then they're still covered? Instead of not approving or you want it not proven?
Well, the the math adds up to three nights, two eighty seven, nine eighty sixty one, that adds up to three nights, I just want to make sure that everything's accurate. And moving forward, can we get the actual agenda attached to all these travel requests, so it's not just the requests? I want to see the actual agenda for the conferences.
I've I've done that every meeting except for this day, we just throw them on.
Yes, I'd rather see the agenda that actually shows the dates on there, conference started and being.
But I normally do that, I normally attach it, but I did not, right, let's be, add a piece on, so.
It just affects it for the. Right, because it affects everything here and if we have, and it like, sometimes it may be an extended stay. While as a district, we shouldn't be paying for an extended stay or early arrival or anything like that. Only the dates were reflected right around the conference and the only reason I bring that up is because it's happened to some of us on school or conference. Where we had to pay our own night when it was an extra day or a day early or something. So I want to make sure that we're staying up hard with everything that's been done.
Right, so those are all audited, not just initially, but then they get audited after work, so we have practices and policies that identify. But then they get audited after work, and we have practices and policies that identify travel time before, after. Uh, they are all matched up with the actual dates of the conference. They actually go through and will determine if meals are provided at the conference and that's taken off some sort of viewing. One of the struggles that we have with this is that these were added today um because of the tight meetings. So uh if you would like, we can hold off on this um and make sure that everything is typically here.
Fine, either way, if we have a question to say, I just want a clarification on the dates. But these, these arrows on these papers, I don't want teachers to have to read the papers that way, no.
Right, well, and in some cases, some of these might be extended, so we will get this clarified for you. Uh, but under normal circumstances, when we have fresh meetings, these errors don't happen. And even if these are errors on here now, they get caught before anything gets posted, before anything uh gets paid.
Uh, who made the motion? Are you finding more of a motion? Yeah, who need to say? Okay, all in favor? I, I oppose. Same. Motion carry. Alright, so um now we have item number six, old business policies. Uh, we have a lot of policies that are not, that are not, a lot of them. Um. And we have a motion to approve all of these policies. Motion. Second by Christians, second by Dale, any questions? Questions, all in favor? Any opposed, abstaining? Here. Hey, item number seven, new business. Uh, we have a B S T A memorandum agreement. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Selena teachers association or S T A. M O A number S T A two thousand twenty four dash eleven regarding summer work base for certain building unit employees, including school counselors. School psychologists, social workers and community on special education, community preschool, special education, process of individualized education, summer program work base be approved. Right, the motion, motion. Dale?
Second.
Second by Tracy, any questions? All in favor? I, 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 any opposed, any abstaining? A motion carries. Right, item D, we have the E P R leading administrators for. Yeah, lead administrators for administrators and teachers. Being resolved that Board of Education approves the following administrator, we have as the. Evaluator of administrators and lead evaluator of teachers for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year described in the annual professional performance review agreement. Lynette McGara be approved. Motion. Second by Christian, second, second by Dale, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstaining? Hey, what it is? Man, I haven't seen change orders. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Board of Education hereby approves the following change order, change order. Phase three point four for plumbing and mechanical fifteen thousand two forty three. Phase four for A turf fifty five hundred dollars. Phase four for H K services, eight thousand nine hundred sixty seven dollars. And they get a motion. Motion. Dale?
Second.
Second by Tracy, any questions?
I have a question. Uh, this, this A turf one, that's not what the soft up here that we talked about, word, it's the multi purpose.
Correct.
That wasn't in the original deal.
Correct. Correct. Uh, we added in the signature for person one into the original logo. Um, initially, actually, we. Well, um, the initially it was not in there because we have a bit. Uh, less detailed version when we do things for royalty and want to do things like. The turf is one of the reasons it came up because the uh detail that's present in the new logo just wouldn't show through.
Right.
And the logo or uh this signature comes out of that automatically. Once it was down on there, we had evaluated, determined if. Uh, we could add the logo and to make sure, but proportions that would actually be visible and distinguishable. And they came back and said, yes, so that's.
You're talking about signature, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstaining? Hey, motion carries. Alright, item D, we have tax warrant. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the tax warrant. For the twenty four, twenty five school year in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they get a motion.
Vote.
By Dale?
Second.
Second by Tracy, any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the abstain? Who carries? Item E, big cafeteria tables and chairs. Um, be resolved that upon the recommendation of superintendent, following. High bins for surplus cafe tables and chairs be warranted to the listed highest bidders, be these specifications be approved. All listed by A through Y. Uh, grand total of five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And they get a motion.
Motion.
By Christian.
Second.
Second. Second by Tracy. Uh, any questions? Okay, I agree. Um, so just, I guess a clarification. Uh, item A. B. G. Are listed as Jamie Pierce, who is the general manager at Semite Gaming United Team. I thought this is being purchased by Semite Gaming United Team. So does it make a difference if it's listed in here?
For future purposes, yeah, we should change it. We know that it's Jamie, but in ten years, somebody could know that. So, yeah, if we could amend that to put some.
B. Choose.
For any entertainment? Or S G A D for sure.
Okay, who made the motion?
I did.
Are you okay with it revised?
Yeah.
In a second. Do you think it was revised?
Yes.
Good. Alright, so any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstain? Okay, who carries? Alright, then we have item F, contract, settlement of service staff organization or S S S O. Be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, following the settlement of service staff organization. Renification of sub proposal, be resolved that collective negotiation settlement with settlement of service staff organization for a three year contract. July one twenty fourth and June thirty twenty seven be approved to the extent requiring that superintendent of schools be hereby authorized and directed to keep same on behalf of the district. And. By Dale? Second by Christians. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstaining, any motion carries? Alright, item A, our personnel consent agenda. Item A and the personnel action, we have several, four, looks like four resignations. Uh, we have several appointments. Uh, some bus run stipends. Some substitute being included. We have an internship. We have some metaphysics for curricular. Okay, so be resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the personnel action items listed. Public content of section eight, item A, can they get a motion?
Motion.
Second by Tracy, second by Christian, any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same. Alright, motion carries. Do we have any introductions?
Jackie DeBerta is coming from. She comes with over one year's experience in education. O C's and they. Places in my school, that's exactly what I'm looking at. We're really excited to have her. She brings a caption, a resilient following.
Yeah, anybody else?
Uh, Sasha Dally, Black State, but I think she departed. Yep, so she's. Yep, so she will be a new bus driver for us. Uh, she, we talked to her this morning, so I know she's excited to be here.
Awesome, congratulations. Okay, uh, item nine, board information. We have our second reading of forty five policies which are attached. Uh, we have a transfer notice of Chadwick from Prescott Elementary School Special Education Teacher to High School Special Education. Twenty twenty four. Um, and then a list of our upcoming events. Um. We have our back. Yeah, tomorrow middle school, back to school, middle school, high school. And then September third, first day of school for students. September tenth, we have our next board of education meeting. That'll be back at the high school L G I. Uh, September eleventh, we have our indigenous education community meeting at four o'clock at high school L G I. October eighth, we have our board of education meeting to be held at five thirty in the school march. Uh, the only question I had is why are we not doing a second board meeting in September?
Sorry, we got one in September or one in October, I think.
Uh. The second meeting would coincide with NAFIS. Um, Karen and I are both at NAFIS at that time or probably traveling. Uh, if somebody comes up personnel wise or want that, we could have another meeting on a different day. Grab the first. At this point, we need, we don't see any. Good. Great, awesome. Is there anything else? Alright, so. Uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Where's my Dale?
Second.
Second by Tracy. Any discussion over that?
There is.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstain, motion carries, we are adjourned. Alright, thank you all.